When you're ready, Jane.
Yeah, thank you. Usually I get this done, but...
I know. Well, we had a full office tonight.
Be able to push the right buttons, Cam?
I think that should be recording.
Okay.
Need a couple of minutes.
Yeah, let me just find my pen.
We're waiting for Jane right now. She's got a few things. We had a group in here prior to us, and she didn't get quite a chance to get set up.
Delay in setting up. Okay, let me rewind this thing. Tobin, did you get the copy of the approved variance?
I did.
Okay. I mailed it Monday. I wasn't sure.
It did come today.
Okay. Okay, this is just about.
Jane, did you have another copy of the minutes?
Oh, let me look. Yeah. Yes, December 8th. Yeah.
Thank you.
You can start with...
Okay. We'll start with the manifest. The manifest is for Jane's timesheet. And we also have for a Southern New Hampshire planning contract, $291.70.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have the minutes from December 8th.
I've got a bunch of corrections, or some are just for clarification, too.
Right there.
And Jane, I've got all my... I'll give you what I've got here, so you don't have to jot them all down.
Oh, you've got them all?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'll give you this. Under Glenda Sorak, this is... This should end up being inserted on the second line, under Glenda Sorak. And as you recall, it was with regard to her conditional approval on a site plan. So, in order to give some context of what this is, this would probably just insert here, within brackets, implying that this is just... This wasn't what was said, but just for clarification.
Okay.
Regarding her conditional approval of a site plan for her lot at the intersection of Route 107 and Old Center Road. So I have all that in brackets. Then, under the Bear Paw, let's see, it's probably the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th line. Leading into that, it says, "They would like to use buildings on the property." And the intent was, and what I think should be inserted, "for commercial purposes, and served by a 2,000-foot driveway." That was one of the major issues, was the length of the driveway. And then, on page 2, the full... First full paragraph, Mr. Farwell was talking about the stone head wall, and it reads hedge wall. So, change that to head wall.
Okay.
And then, the next paragraph, it says, "He noted that there..." In inserting, "There would be 18 to 20 people maximum on site." Just inserting, "There would be." And the next one-sentence paragraph, Bonnie Bobian spoke, saying she was a member of the Board of Bear Paw, and insert, "Was just here," H-E-R-E, "to listen."
Yeah.
And then, the next one, third, Bob Cody asked if there would be any thought about building a new building closer to the road. Ms. Bobian replied, "It had not been discussed, but it was not..." It was not out of the question. Okay. Never mind. That's fine as it is. Then, down the bottom, just before the continuation of Sandra and Ed Cross, Cam Pearlman advised that Linda Perry...
Perry, okay. I didn't know.
Butter had submitted several comments. And then, that leads into the Cross minor subdivision. I've got numerous corrections here. And the question is, do we have a tape of this still on file?
No, I'm afraid not.
Okay. As Mr. Cross has filed suit against the town with regard to the layout of Ridge Road, and I'm sure he will be looking to at these minutes with regard to his suit. So, correction, I have third line. He said that he does not believe the re-layout of, and insert, Ridge Road as a Class 6 road was done properly, and he still has objection. Then, let's see, the next sentence reads, "He advised that..." Insert, "He does have a letter," and insert, "from his attorney pertaining to this situation." The next one-sentence paragraph should read, "Board members reviewed the plan and agreed that the date of the layout of Ridge Road as a Class 6 road be included on the plan." And, let's see, then the paragraph that reads off with Mr. McGary, "So that typically the town does not issue a building permit until," and insert, "the owner signs a waiver of liability for building on a Class 6 road, and strike layout of a road is complete." And then, the next sentence, "Mr. McGary said the town council will be asked to review," insert, "the letter, but this will not affect decisions of the planning board."
Okay.
But I've got all this...
You do. Thank you. I had a problem with the tape. It kind of broke off in the thing, so I was just trying to do it from my notes. Thank you.
That's all I had.
A minor typo on page 2, Jane.
Page 2?
The second to the last paragraph, it should be submitted.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Are we all set?
All set.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections noted.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Did you hear that we have a petition warrant article?
No.
We have a petition warrant article to increase the... Excuse me, the lot size to 5 acres. And we have until January 31st to hold a public hearing.
You better have it at your next meeting.
Right, exactly. That's what my thought was. So, and I'll give you... I've prepared a notice of public hearing, and I could give this a copy to Jane, too.
Good.
And... I'll give Cam a copy, too. So, we need to get this into the paper.
Oh, you're putting it in the paper?
It has to go in the paper, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Plus two locations posted. So, obviously, the post office.
It's got to be done, like tomorrow.
Yeah, it has to be in by Friday.
Friday. Okay.
Okay. And if you need to, I can email you my actual text to this.
Okay.
If that makes it easier.
Okay. If you email it to me, that's...
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have it in case somebody wants to see it.
So, it's short and sweet, just as I meant, section 204...
Yeah.
To...
Yeah, she just wants to change the...
So, yeah. And they only had... The requirement is to have 25 signatures, and they had 25, so...
Yeah.
If one person can't be checked, or is not a registered voter, then we don't have to have this hearing, but...
Yeah.
So, that's that.
Okay.
So, I got this scheduled for our next...
Next meeting, yeah. I have nothing on the agenda yet, so that'll work.
All right.
And the other thing, too, is, and I talked to Cam about this, once this is posted, which will be Friday, the next... Anything else coming into us, it's as if this is in effect until the actual vote occurs.
Yeah.
So, anybody submitting a subdivision, it's going to have to have 5 acres, period, unless they want to delay it until they find out what the vote is.
But I think that won't affect the subdivision coming in tonight?
No.
No.
No. No.
But it has to be voted on.
Yeah, once it's voted on, then if it's 5 acres, it stays 5 acres, but then it just drops back to 3, and they can...
Yeah.
Basically, the thing to do for whoever it applies.
We have the public hearing. Is anybody coming in to explain this? Do we know that yet? Or is it just going to be us discussing it?
I know Rick's talked to Jim Raymond as well.
Yeah.
That's what he said.
Yeah.
Until it's voted on, you have to abide by the...
Right.
Okay. Okay, 7:15. Take it away, Tobin.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Tobin Farwell, Farwell Engineering Services, here to discuss Free Willow Lane in Deerfield. Last time we met, we had the issue that I was asking for a Pleasant Lake Watershed Ordinance review from the planning board, but because we were within 50 feet of a tributary, we needed zoning relief. I went to the zoning board. We met with the zoning board a couple of times, and on the December 28th, we did get approval for the plan that I'm presenting tonight. The changes to the plan are, we did remove a portion of the building that was going to be a covered roof area, and there's a slight rotation in the building as well. I think the previous was 36, 35, 36 feet from the property line, this being the closest point of 26.8. That all remained the same. So, we did get our variance approval for this proposed building, and what ended up happening is we matched the setback to the center line of the stream, which is 41.8, and we got that. We have 42 feet is the closest point now at the rear of the building. So, that brings us back for the planning board for, again, review and approval from the Pleasant Lake Watershed Ordinance for this proposed layup. We have reduced the impervious coverage a minor amount, which takes into, you know, this reduction almost 1 percent. We are now at 26.1 percent. I think we were nearly 27 percent on the previous plan. We have been out there. The planning board has walked the site. If there's any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I didn't make it to the walkthrough, so I hope to leave it to you. We three did, so...
Yeah. I guess one of my questions is, how do we consider a deck as a living space?
Deck is not... The state considers it an impervious surface. Living... I don't know what you mean by living space.
Well, you're saying that you're going by the square footage of the building that's there, and that's pretty much what you're matching for square footage of the new building.
No, no, that's not what I said. I'm sorry. What we... I went to the zoning board because we're within the 50 feet.
Yep.
And the zoning board said, "Match the distance to the center line of the stream." So, there is no matching. We have this building is bigger than what is there now. It is smaller, the number of bedrooms. This is currently two 2-bedroom units on the tax card, and we are proposing one 2-bedroom unit, but the square footage of the house is larger.
Well, I guess my question there is, you're considering the deck part of the square footage of the existing house, correct?
No, I'm considering the deck to be impervious. So, what goes on beyond this is there's an impervious coverage concern that the town, as well as the state, is concerned about. Nothing to do with living space, just impervious coverage. What is impervious coverage? Decks, roofs, garages, driveways, gravel or paved. So, I tally all that information, and to show you what is happening pre and post-construction. What's it like today, impervious coverage, and what's it like after this project is completed, impervious coverage? So, those are the numbers that I have tallied. That's the one that the state cares about, and the town cares about. As far as living space, I don't have that on the plan, but I could... I couldn't... Probably couldn't figure it out on the fly, but there is no question that this is a bigger living... heated living space is growing with this proposed layup.
Bob? Could you remind us again about the impervious area before and after?
Sure. The existing impervious area is currently 22.7 percent, and we are going to 26.1 percent. Again, probably the biggest increase is the driveway. Right now, you walk out there, as you guys did, the driveway is not very defined. There's a lot of... You walk around, and it's hard to tell if you're on the driveway or not. So, I took my best guess. It's very small, and obviously, designing a new driveway, you have to have a turnaround, you know, in order to be compliant with common engineering practice. You don't want people backing out onto Willow Lane, as I believe happens now, but who knows exactly? I mean, there's trees. I think that's what they do. So, the driveway is a lot... Is much larger in the building, and that makes up that 3 percent increase in impervious coverage.
Trying to recall what the requirement was as far as tree removal within streams, because there were a couple of large trees, I think, that were... You're proposing to remove for the driveway?
Yeah, these are... All the trees that are proposed to be removed are grayed out right here. We did talk about that before. I don't know what more you want. That's 42 feet, so most of those trees are beyond the 50 foot. These black ones are the ones that are going to remain. And again, based on the state guidelines of a number of point system, we exceed the shoreland requirement, which doesn't apply to this, because it only applies to the body of water, but taking that system into account, that we meet the point requirement that they have come up with.
Go ahead, Fred.
Yeah, the maximum allowed by the ordinance is 30 percent, and this proposal is below that, so I think that's one of the concerns that we have, and Tobin has met that requirement. The Board of Adjustment has waived the 50 foot, and meeting the suggestion that we had, that they're not getting any closer than what is currently occurring now. And Tobin has met that requirement as well, so I think... Only one thing I'm trying to see on there. We don't have a copy of the plan in front of me, but...
No, I apologize. I did make two extra copies, and I got Peter saying, "Take it away." Just... One for the record.
Get another one, or just...
Yeah, just two there.
The other comment they had was, "I don't see anything for any location with a chair to sign it for approving it."
Ah, you're absolutely correct. Now that you say that, I do remember. I also, just for the record, I did get a certified letter from the owner allowing me to present.
Okay.
But I did not do the planning board signature block.
I can sign it anywhere.
We should have the super approved by...
No. Okay, to have that on. That, obviously, is not a big detail for you to get.
No.
And then, when you get it, Jane will contact me, and I'll take care of that.
Get any... Any others? Want to ask any questions?
We're not there yet.
Okay.
Any members of the audience have any questions about this plan?
As is Jason, as EPA.
And you can come up here and take a look at the plan on the easel, if you want.
Or I can take it back. You saw it at the meeting. If there's any you want to look at it.
No, it's part of the EPA. That's what it is. That's what it is.
Okay.
Trying to recall. Was there a question about the hemlock tree in the vicinity of the retaining wall, whether that would... The grading would change at that and basically make the tree unsustainable? Yeah, that one that's marked as an 16-inch hemlock.
The contours you're showing, you're not getting into that hemlock, is that...
You're about, what, close to a half inch?
Oh, yeah. That hemlock should be okay.
16-inch hemlock, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's...
Yeah.
Grading's going to come right to you.
So, the grading's not going to change in that area?
No, right, right.
It's not going to...
That part over there from the building.
Yeah.
So, we are putting a retaining wall, but that, again, it's pretty far. I don't know how it's holding on, this ledge.
Get the drill out.
I'll make a motion to...
Conditional.
Provide conditional approval, the only condition being that they have a signature block for the chair.
Looks like there is...
And...
Provision here along the edges of the roof.
I assume you can get that within 30 days.
Yes, I can. How many copies? Just one copy?
No, we need...
Two, and a Mylar, right?
Yeah, well, we don't need a Mylar, because it doesn't get recorded. Actually, why don't you give me three?
It's true that there's infiltration here that's...
Can we have a Mylar for the file?
We don't record.
For our file?
I never have gotten one. I'm sure he can give us one if you think you...
This is not to do what?
A Mylar.
To record it?
No.
Or I give you the Mylar, but not to record it?
Yeah, we don't record it.
It would just be a Mylar for the...
For our file.
That's the detail. I take it for this.
I'll give you electronic copy. That way, you'll have it.
Right up until we run out of power. And we're using candles to find it.
That's right.
Yeah. Do we get a second on that?
Fred did make a motion for a conditional approval. We need to have the drawing with the...
Signature block.
A signature block for the planning board. That was basically what he had on his conditional approval. You guys have anything?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of a conditional approval for the Miller J. Van Valet plan for... Excuse me, for the Pleasant Lake subdivision? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tobin.
Thank you.
Keep this one, Jane.
Yeah.
Goodie? And then, we'll have one with a signature block, but the plan's going to remain the same.
The plan will be the same.
Yeah, right.
Hold on a second. Did you ask for nays on that?
One nay on that.
Oh, there was a nay?
Yeah. Okay. You didn't ask, but there is.
Three, one.
Dick had a question.
Go ahead, Dick. What's that?
I will move on, so we've gotten all town rules. I'm moving on to for the shoreline permit and the subsurface permit for the subjects.
So, if something changes, will they come back to this, Tobin?
Yes.
So, we will know. We won't be going to state hearings.
No, so it's just submitting paperwork to the state, and then, you know, there should be no changes, but if there's a change that affects the layout of the building, I would have to go back before the planning board for a conditional approval once again. That's when you would be notified. I'd have to make another application. I'm praying that there should not be any changes, but that would be the process if there were.
Thanks, Dick.
And he has 30 days to get the revised plan to us, and it's... He should take less than that.
Less... Before Friday, while you guys are gone, Friday, Thursday.
Okay.
Tomorrow. Are you kidding?
Come around.
Yeah.
Give me a reason to go through it.
All right. This is a continuation.
Yeah, this is Ed's, Ed Cross's.
Right. And this is for the major subdivision.
Major subdivision, yeah.
For a public hearing, major and minor subdivision on Range Road.
A Mylar for the one loss subdivision.
Yeah, I think she designed this tonight.
Okay, yeah.
So, you leave.
Fred, let me get a quick one. Okay. We'll jump to the fire pond. I did talk to the chief, and he'll want to take a look at this. In addition, we'll have to obviously send this off to Keach Knodsmann for review.
He's had it for a month, and did he give you the manifesto today or not?
Steve, Steve Keach?
Yes.
No, I haven't heard from him at all.
I've been going back and forth, and he was going to have it today and give me a copy of everything.
Yeah, I have not seen anything. I know. I remember you saying, "Well, he's the one that wrote the letter back in September," outlining...
Yeah.
Right.
That's not good.
Don't know how busy he is.
We've had this plan done for a month, I think.
So you, you didn't give this to the fire chief, right?
Nope.
Okay, so he wants to see that. He wants to see that and comment on it, I know he wants, he wants your engineer to say that the fire pond will meet the requirements of NFPA, whatever the regulation is. I talked to.
Matt.
Matt. And he says he wants, he's gonna take a look at the fire pond, but he also wants, wants a notation in here that the fire pond meets all the requirements of NFPA.
Yep. Well, it's National Fire Protection, I'm not sure, that's, it's, I think, it's not NFA though.
The engineer probably knows.
He'll know what it is, yeah.
And notation that it meets those requirements.
So, pond is a few feet deeper now, it's seventy-six thousand gallons, and we require thirty. I do show the open water. Basically, the open water is ten, fifteen feet, over the edge.
Oh, and I think you're showing a fence on here, but he wants, he does, definitely wants a fence around it. It's a, a, basically a stock, stock fence, not a, not a.
For safety?
Not a, not a chain link fence, but a, but yeah, basically, like a stock fence or whatever. Prefer to the chair on that.
Now, the neighbor across the road would like to look at that, I guess.
That's what they've been putting around most of the other fire ponds, is a, it's almost like a three by three stock fence.
Yeah, right. Well, that's what the chief wants.
That's what the chief wants?
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen, you know, I've seen more than that before, but, I mean, sometimes they, they get a little overboard.
So, we're talking four foot tall?
That would be, I think that's. Be sufficient.
About what they are.
Yeah.
And, what, like a three by three wire fence, three by three?
Yeah, Dawn, Dawn's more familiar than I am.
It's no different to put a fence around your pool, you know, little kids or whatever, get away from the parents, animals, whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's basically the same type of fence, if you've been out on the tractors are flying by it, and it comes in a roll. I mean, they have three foot high, four foot high, five foot high. Looks like a cattle fence.
You just need to give it, give us a detail on that, too. Oh, have we got an escrow account on this?
We haven't, until he finalizes what we're doing, he doesn't know what's gonna cost, so that was probably gonna be the next step. Unless he, if he's happy with what we have now, by the next meeting, he could also be giving, if you guys can personally ask him to do that as his review.
Yeah. They'll also need the homeowners and association agreement.
I already submitted that months ago.
And I gave it back, I gave it back to you with the needed corrections.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, they had, they wanted a few corrections, so you have it back with what they wanted.
So we'll need to have that before any finalization.
I haven't seen that, but that doesn't mean it didn't get emailed to you. Did you, how did, how did you get this sent to me?
Gave it to you.
I think we had, it was a hard copy, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause Jim, yeah, this is it.
If I can get another, I, I don't recall getting a copy of that, maybe I just, maybe it's in your stuff, Roscoe, but it's not mine.
I never saw it.
So we, I think you sent, Jim reviewed it, right?
Yeah, right, yeah, Jim's.
So.
This is it.
This is the review from Jim Raymond.
I have another copy, I'll look. Oh, yes.
I, I may have gotten it and not realized it.
Yeah, I, I only got one copy, I haven't.
Roscoe, on the, on the print here with your fire pond.
That's, that's.
I guess this is what I was thinking, is this depiction of a fence?
I think that's a silk fence.
That's silk.
Silk fence, okay, that's basically what it'd be then, same thing.
What is the problem?
Yeah, that's what I thought that was, that's why I wasn't gonna even question the fence.
Continue around and.
Yep.
Put a gate or whatever, I guess.
Usually, it's like a, they have like a three foot opening in front.
Yep. Well. Are you talking about an opening or a gate?
The ones that I, the one by my place is just, it's basically an open spot and fence that.
Cause basically.
But if this has got a dry hydrant, maybe they want it sealed completely off.
You got a dry hydrant, the hydrant's coming out, so you'd want the fence to be all the way around, and then.
The ones that we have around us are right sealed completely.
Right.
They're open in the front, but there's no dry hydrant happening.
Okay, that's why.
Firefighters have to get it, this one here with the dry hydrant, it could have to be sealed.
You wouldn't need a gate, the fence would go right to the dry hydrant on both sides, and then if they need to get in there, they would take it apart and take it in.
Right. You, your note on a pond stabilization, banking stabilization, is giving the, the choice of wetlands, plant species, or geofabric with riprap. I didn't, we, I don't think we gave you that option.
No, so your engineer put that note in there, right, Roscoe?
So take the first part off.
Yeah, 'cause we just said riprap, erosion stone, he probably put that in, your engineer wrote that in, right? The, the species?
Well, he may want and, maybe.
No, because the weeds are gonna grow anyway.
Yeah.
Okay?
Oh, they will.
Yeah, they're gonna grow, so the rock will be fine.
But you want geofabric and you want riprap.
Yeah, you put the fabric down first and then the stone on top.
Yeah.
Yeah, one foot riprap, you think?
No, 'cause that's just gonna punch holes in the fabric, six inch minus.
Okay.
Cause it's hard, it's too hard to put one foot in without destroying, without destroying the fabric.
Mm-hmm.
The only way you can do that is, you have to put sand under the fabric, then put the fabric, and then put the stone, they don't need to do that. You just, six inch minus stone is all it needs.
But it has to be on here, too.
Yeah, because you can use, if you guys have stone that's, you know, when you dig the thing and you screen it, and it's, you know, you can't work with this. You can work with this, you can't work with that. This is for building breakwaters, for the slope of a, cause in order to build a slope with two to three foot rock, you've gotta place them. You know, so just plain old.
Some stuff you can use your own and.
Yeah, if you're digging the hole. And he's got a screener.
We're expected to screen it?
Yeah, he's gonna screen it, yeah. All you gotta do is put a five inch screen on there, and you're gonna have the best stone, you're gonna be fine. You know, 'cause what happens is, if you try to use. A one to three foot stone, you gotta start placing them, 'cause otherwise, your fabric is just gonna be useless. Okay, and then what happens then is the dirt will slip out through the rock. I know, I only know this to be true.
Yeah, so, why, he has not been to the site, he wants to go to it, does he want one of us to walk it with him? So, my, this was my understanding, I know that he's been out to the site to see at least the pond area. Okay. I just recall it, one of our previous meetings, he didn't have any other concerns, other than having it be at least a thirty thousand gallon retaining pond.
And he wants, basically, based on. He just wants this to meet the fire code.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a basic thing.
That's no problem, if that's a basic, I, I'm not familiar with it, so that's, I'm a little ignorant with that.
It's just one of the fire codes for fire ponds. And you've got, you know, you're gonna put like a cattle fence around there, and you've got, you've got the layout for the, the apron, you've got the dry hydrant in there.
Can I ask a question on?
Go ahead, Ed.
On the cattle fencing?
Yep.
Where it's so close to the wetland, can it go from the wetland in front of the pond to the wetland?
As opposed to all the way around it?
The fence all the way around it.
I wouldn't imagine they'd want, why would you have to have it out in the swamp?
Yeah, you're trying to keep kids.
Anything out in the swamp's gonna be in the swamp already.
A dangerous kid.
Well, what it is, you wouldn't put it down in the wetlands, you'd put it at the top of the slope enough that where you could put it. As far as.
A horseshoe.
I know what you're saying.
But the thing is, talk to the chief.
He wants it all.
Talk to the chief about it.
Yeah, if he wants it all the way, let me put it to, let me put it this way, by the time you do the horseshoe, you're probably talking about another fifty or sixty feet.
I'm actually thinking about not doing that visually, if I'm a neighbor, the least amount of fence, and a little fence in between a wetland and a wetland, that's just.
It's, and I agree with what, I agree with what you're saying. It's not about that, it's about the little kid. Like me, when I was little, that would go into the water, that's the problem. Okay, that's, 'cause that's what I did, the same pond that I threw the bottles in. But, it's just, that's all it's about. I know the aesthetic, you're not gonna put up a PVC fence, yeah, it's not there, you can get, it's just to stop.
I know exactly what it is, what I used for my ghost, I know exactly what it is, you don't have to go any further.
That's all, it's. That's all it is.
And I assumed that that was a requirement, because I see them at every pond.
Do you wanna walk this with, you call the chief, you, him, give us a set of plans, and that's.
Now that we have that out, I have.
Based on what Fred said to you, get that on there, that's what he was looking for?
Yeah. But again, you should bring it to him, talk to him about it, too.
Yeah, just to make sure that he's happy. Cause based on what he says to us, and then all of a sudden, he pulls something else out, and we didn't approve it, or whatever, you know.
I, no problem.
Just give him a call.
Yeah, it's easy enough.
Okay, we need a, I don't see if, unless it's, the details back here. You got a paving detail? I don't see any paving details. The subdivision plan.
You want like a cross section?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I, I don't see it.
No, just the basic cross section.
And the extent of paving, you talked about a full hundred feet, or what were we talking about?
He's got, he's got that on the right thing, doesn't he? Is it back one?
No, this is there.
On the last page, I think we did the profile.
Last page?
Yeah, play in view.
That's just the construction entrance. Cause what he got is, he's got his filter cloth down, and he's got a, a stone here, that's what he's got there.
So that's not adequate?
No, what this is, is for construction, that's his stabilized construction end, that's what he's got there. So basically, he's gonna show the same thing, Roscoe, it's just gonna be.
Different dimensions.
Right, it's just gonna say twelve inches of crush, twelve inches of bank run, six inches of crush, three inches asphalt. Yeah, he's got it, it's just a generic.
It's what the town has.
Right.
Not regulated.
It's a, it's in the regulations, yeah, it's just a generic cross section. They got all the check dams marked in there, that's good.
Yeah. The, and. Will we call it a full hundred feet in there, or what, as far as paving? Up into here?
Where was?
That's a hundred.
There's your turnaround right here, right? That's the turnaround. So you go down, that's the turnaround?
Yep.
And.
You got that hole.
This, this whole thing here is a turnaround.
Forty feet, from here to here, which is slightly wider.
Now, this is a driveway, that's a driveway, that's a driveway. This is these two driveways with turnaround right there, and actually, it goes, it's, it's a hammerhead, so it's the both sides. And this is, that's what's getting paved, and that's it. Okay.
Unless.
That's all you're doing, right?
That's all I'm doing.
Right, okay, and that's on these two lots, and how far are you bringing the paving in here?
Going up to here?
I would, you know, what do you think works the best, 'cause this is the end of the road. But that's where trucks will be turning, where fire trucks be.
Put it up to there.
Yeah, so that, you're a hundred and fifty feet in.
So he's gotta, he's gotta identify the extent of the paving on here, 'cause it's not, it's not called out at all in the drawing.
Yeah, well, I can call it out now, and I'll have you pick it up.
You wanna draw it on mine, or stick to it? So, this one here, you've got your lines here, okay, so this is your hammerhead.
Yep.
It'll be good here.
Old pavement, yep.
Just have him draw that out. Over here. Coming in, so. Right here's a hundred and fifty feet, so, and you've got forty by twenty there, you wanna at least bring that pavement, like right across here, you know, on this line.
Yep.
And then down.
Okay. That'll be easy.
Right there. You wanna have him just, you wanna have him put the, the profile there, or you want the details?
Oh, you can put, you can put it.
You can do it wherever you want, you can put the cross.
You do the last page, or this looks like this room under there.
You can put it here if you want, or you can put it on the detail, as long, since the paving is getting designated here, you should probably put it here, then that way. Now, this is still private.
Yeah.
Okay, so. They don't have to go twelve and six.
Oh, yeah, we normally require that.
Well, okay, okay, that's what I was just trying to, was gonna drive.
What, what was that you just said?
I was just trying to figure out, because this is private here, whether we're gonna go with twelve and six or twelve, so.
Just good, twelve and six.
Okay.
Standard.
Yep.
Twelve, twelve inches of what?
One is gravel. Six inch minus and six inches of crush.
Yeah.
Is a Smith Road ordinance the same as that, or does it require less?
No.
Just curious.
Smith Road is.
A different story.
Yeah.
Okay, we won't talk about the Smith.
So, yeah, so just have him put that detail on this page, because when whoever's doing the layout for the job. Knows that it's, goes right here.
All right, and we're setting, setting stone bounds, you get a stone bound detail?
No, but I think I know how to set a stone bound.
Well, we want a detail on here to show what is to be done. And the other issue, I think, and this is, this is probably critical, this driveway here. And. I think this probably should be constructed, this is the real steep one.
The center one?
Yeah.
Lot seventy-one dash five?
It should probably be constructed along with this stuff.
Seventy-one dash five.
So.
Why?
Why? Because the water's gonna be gushing down that hill, and in order to have the proper control on it to protect the road and everything else, and make sure that the, these. Water collection areas, detention ponds, work, it's best to have, be able to have that done as part of this overall project.
The only problem I have with that is that these two are not gonna be built on, more than likely, for years, and that'll just leave it wash away.
Okay, then don't do anything here.
Yeah, I'm not gonna do anything, I'm gonna...
Because if you're not, if, if you put this in and you do this, you don't do this, this is gonna get destroyed.
So, one of my questions was gonna be exactly that, is can this be done at one time? Can this be done later? Cause even if I don't do this with the same person I'm planning to, which is what's gonna happen, I would probably still only do this one first and this one a year later.
Then you're breaking, then you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to bond it.
Yeah, well, we got two phases and you get one approved and not have to pay the other. You can sell these lots but not sell those lots, put that in the bond maybe? Have Keach break it into two?
So, so your concern, just, I'm trying to understand this. So your concern is that if this gets built and the topography stays just the way it is, I'm not hyper focusing anything in to here because this doesn't exist and this doesn't exist. Um, shouldn't that not be very disturbed?
You're still gonna be building these detention ponds.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that those would still have to be built, but the topography's not gonna be changing with these driveways. So it's not gonna be so dramatically drastic in that area, it's just gonna slope according to the way the topography is. And if the detention ponds are here...
So your plan is to, to take care of this, this phase of the job first?
My, my plan is to get the whole thing approved.
No, I understand that, but it's construction purposes, you're talking about this first, this second.
So, the whole plan, I mean, the, the whole project's gonna be sold to one person.
Okay.
So I can't speculate exactly what he's gonna do. I, I can tell you what I know.
Well, then, here's the way it has to be done. If you're gonna sell it to one person, none of this can happen until there's a bond for everything.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's the way it will have to be done. Because if you're selling it, the next person is gonna have to bond it. Okay? So, if, it, what I'm, what I'm getting at is you're selling an approved plan.
It would be an approved plan with the road, with this the way it is.
So you wanna build this, then sell it?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're gonna take care of this, you're gonna build the, the pond and get all that infrastructure done?
That's correct.
Okay. The, the, the thing would be is, is that, um...
I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I'm, but I'm just looking at what I do know about the topography and the way that it lays out there and the way that everything is running. This is a very soft topography compared to what this is. Once you build these, that's where everything gets channeled down. But before you build these driveways, if this was just left virgin, just the way it is, it should not do anything dramatic, cause this is relatively flat area in comparison to the, the rest of the pond.
Are you planning on cutting these lots?
Not until the time when they're ready to be doing something.
So, your plan is to come in here, get this and this done, put these pipes in?
Yep.
So technically what he's bonding is this, anyway, not the driveways.
Right, and I, my thought is that this should be bonded as well.
I, that seems like it oversteps.
Due to the potential impact that would have on the road and if it's not built right, uh...
So wouldn't that be a requirement potentially for the, when they go to build the, build it, build it out? Pull a building permit on it?
Well, that's what I, what I was wondering here is, is that...
I mean...
There's no, we should, you know, we should, maybe we should come up with a stipulation that this driveway needs to be built prior to a permit for a foundation.
Built and approved.
Because you can't, you're not getting a concrete truck up there until this is built.
Oh, yeah.
Not, not happening, either one of them. So, if he bonds this, you know, if we have notes on the drawing that no foundation permits are given until these driveways are built and inspected. Because he, he's right in the sense that, you know, if, if they don't build this right...
Yep.
Okay, cause if you sell it, it's not you anymore, it's somebody else.
Sure.
And he's not the guy that was in here answering the questions. And the only recourse we have on it is to make sure that this gets built right. And the only way we can make sure it gets built right is if we say that there's no permits until these driveways are built and inspected. That's the only, that's the only recourse we would have.
That sounds like a good...
Yeah, cause I, I mean, we went through this detail because that was our concern.
Right.
And so that's gonna be a requirement for these two lots. I don't see that being a problem at all.
So, I mean, so your bond would be for these two accesses to the, the driveways. This one here, these two lots, would have to have a note on the plan and something that would, um, that would be on file for a building inspector to understand that no permits for foundations are given until the driveways are built.
Yeah, and the problem with that is that Rick has, has complained in the past that he doesn't wanna deal with...
No, Keach Northman has to inspect it.
No, no, I mean, he's, as far as bouncing it back to the potential homeowner, he doesn't wanna be dealing with it. Cause that's what he's expressed to me.
He'll be gone.
Well, no, this, I, this, I'm not, I'm not putting this on Rick, I'm putting this on any building inspector about the permit, okay? Not, not Rick, I mean exclusively.
That they will think to go back and look at the drawings to see that condition?
No, it's attached to the lot number.
Then Keach is hired to look at it after.
So...
Reason, the reason why I'm bringing this up, because Keach Northman had mentioned about the concern with regard to this and the, the flow of water coming down that hill. But also, I went out to look at, uh, the McLaren, McLaren Drive.
Mm-hmm.
And we had shown a driveway coming up, coming off that cul-de-sac.
Mm-hmm.
And it's gonna require major construction to be able to do that. And I'm thinking, we should have required that to be done as part of the road and that, that's why I'm thinking exactly the same thing here. It's not a simple, it's not a simple driveway you're gonna be building.
No, I understand, well, we've got it designed and put a note, uh, no building permit until it's built and approved. And it's, they don't do it to approval and then they're stuck until they do it.
But isn't that putting this, putting a burden on now on the buyer again instead of the guy putting the plans out?
Right.
See, to me, I'm looking, I'm looking at this as I'm looking at these driveways on this plan. So to me, everything here has to be built as if those driveways were there.
So I, I get plans all the time. And when you get plans, there's notes on the plans. And that's the approved plan that the building inspector reviews.
Mm-hmm.
And if, you know, if that's what is the plan, in order to change it, you, you gotta, you gotta go through the process. And you, you know, basically, you're supposed to build what's on the plan. And whether it, whether it goes to the homeowner or not, that's the plan he bought.
Generally lots are sold and people build the driveway and open the house.
Right. This, and I understand where Fred's coming from, cause it's not your regular driveway.
It's not like you're dealing with a situation like these. These are, these are real, the, the, the other three, I'm pointing to the other three, three driveways, there's no real big deal with regard to building these.
Right.
This, this one, this one definitely and this one probably too.
And again, the details on the plan so that when somebody's buying that, it's pretty clear what has to happen. So if, even me, if I'm a builder and I'm buying these lots, I, I would look at that note that I have to build the driveway. It's not like the driveways are just cut down, you put a lot of detail for them to understand. And I don't have a problem putting a note on it, like what you're, what you're suggesting. And that plan has to be used to get the permit, just the way that it's drawn. And that's gonna be there for whoever the building inspector is to see.
So, one of the things that building inspectors look at is the driveway. In, in other towns, not just Deerfield. And, you know, if they don't build it like this, this number's not gonna be ten.
Uh-huh.
It's gonna be, you know, twelve to fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
Cause if they tried to follow the hill, it's not gonna work.
Exactly right.
That plans can be viewed at the town hall. If we have the plan.
Yeah, I mean, that's the...
I mean, that's...
They have to be.
I mean, once somebody comes in with a set of plans, even if it's not approved...
Mm-hmm.
Should we have a set of plans here so people can look at it?
Oh, yeah, that would be good. Yeah, Jane does, yeah.
Right, she keep, only after you get them.
Of course.
Right, so once, and then once we get them, so even if it's not approved, they can still come in and take a look.
Oh, yeah, once the application comes in.
So, does it say that on the town website?
No.
So maybe that needs to be added.
No, I guess...
Well, I could add it to the notice if...
But I think we...
Yeah.
The notice goes to the town website.
Right.
So just putting that on the notice.
Put that on the notice is good.
Just put it on the notice, it covers it.
So whenever somebody goes, you want it to look at it?
Yeah, why not?
So whenever, you know, people understand that, that they can come look. I, I guess most people would rather just look at it on there.
Oh, if they could, yeah.
If they can.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, until we get that nailed down, still, as long as they can get it.
Oh, yeah, you can take that, yeah.
As long as they can get here and look at it.
Right.
They'll have to, obviously, you know, it's much easier to look at stuff online.
We could require having applicants submit, you know, an electronic...
Make it so that it's available online.
Yeah. Yeah, or they, as a part of submitting their application to Jane, they also submit electronic copy and we have a place...
I, I give John everything, like of the notices and...
Yeah, but I mean like...
Is the website set up for people to look at plans?
But yeah, it would be, it would just be a PDF, it'd be really easy to do.
Yeah.
I, other towns do that, so I know it's possible, you know.
Yeah, no, it's just a matter of, is our website capable of doing it?
Yeah, definitely, for sure.
Oh, yeah, of course.
It would, it would just be us requiring applicants to submit that, which they all can.
Yeah.
You know, they're all making these on software.
Well, maybe that, I don't know, that's something we'd have to take and amend or...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Subdivision regulations, which would have a public hearing and...
Just put that notice in there.
That would be nice for me, too. I mean, I'd like to look at these sometimes before, before they hand them in.
Before the last minute, right.
Well, when you're an old contractor like Fred and been looking at plans for a long time, or myself...
It's like drinking water, right? I just look at the plan and go, okay, that's not gonna work, that's not gonna work, that's not gonna work.
But, um, okay.
Let me, let me check with John and to see if we could do that. And then it would just be a matter of whether we, I guess, procedure, technically, I guess, we'd have to have a public hearing to amend the subdivision regulations to make that as a requirement. I can't see anybody complaining about it, but...
No, but we have to do a formality.
Formality, exactly.
Informally.
Right.
But, can't go anywhere yet. Somebody has to make the call. I move to, uh, close the meeting. Should we have a second? Call those in favor.
All right. This is the latest we've been in a while.
Yeah, well, but we really can't complain.
Yeah, month off, that's true.
So...
That's true.